Yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to use.
Yeah.
I'd like to remind you, speaking your microphone. We did a good job last week.
He didn't say nothing.
Oh, good. I feel a little left out. I can't hear the person right over there. Or David, I can't hear him. I feel claustrophobic in a way.
I wasn't behind him, man.
If anyone has not signed in, we have a sign-in sheet, and that is greatly appreciated. We're gonna have a public hearing at 10 o'clock, and that sign-in sheet is what's we're gonna use to demonstrate the people are interested in this grant to give us, you know, give them incentive to give us grants. Yeah? Is it? Well, we want to say it on end. I'm sorry. We don't want to say it. You know. I know what you're talking about. We don't want to say it. Okay. Well, I did that agenda last week, so. Where's Marsha?
I'm out today. Marsha did it.
Oh, we're all in now?
Yes. So be nice.
Well, we have one minute.
Be nice.
We don't have time.
Stacy, I want to go find you a ruler for the statements.
We're gonna share.
Y'all are. I bet Timmy has an extra. Would you grab a extra?
I.
Do you need a ruler?
I got a ruler. I don't have a ruler right there.
Those are county issues. I want to take them back to court. Did I put my name on them? They get mine.
I'll retire them.
You do.
Sharon gets them.
Actually, when Stacy Rogers retired, he brought them. Go back, well, he's just been saving them for years.
He's a little gift. It's going away.
It was a going away gift.
Thank you, sir.
Come on in. If y'all could sign in for me. And I assume you're here for Safe Streets?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I heard your reading was very good.
I heard yours was very good.
Well, you did characters. I didn't do characters.
You looked great.
I did see your costume, and I was very thankful that my costume was long pants.
I had shorty shorts. What am I calling?
You ready? Yep. Oh, yeah. We shall begin. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Young County Commissioners Court. Let the record show, it is 9:31 a.m. All five members of the court are present. We are streaming live on YouTube, and if you're watching and you'd like to call in and make a comment, the phone number is 940-221-2107. If you're able, please stand for our invocation and pledge. Commissioner Cresswell, heavenly honors today.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you today to ask you for guidance and understanding as we go through these proceedings today. Dear Lord, let us do what's best for this community, dear Lord. We ask you to watch over these people with all this sickness and disease going around here lately. Dear Lord, help their bodies to heal. And dear Lord, we thank you each and every day for this opportunity to come to you and pray openly in this country. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, we'll move to item number three on the agenda, public comments, announcements, and presentations. I do have one public announcement. Is that Jimmy and I, we're working on a grant to get a generator for our radio equipment. And so, we've started the process to apply for a grant for that. Are there any other public comments? I know we're gonna have a public hearing later, so this is separate from the public hearing. Any other public comments about what's going on around the county?
Just thank everybody for showing up for the stock show. They had a really good stock show this year.
I heard it was really well played. It was a good show.
Well, it was planned out, but it's good. We thought, Michelle, we've gone so long, so.
Good. Anything else? All right, we'll move to the receipt of the hotel occupancy tax, the hot report. $670.94, that's for December 2024, from La Casa Tierra. And then we have another hot tax report, $32.55 for December 2024. That's from the cabin at Salt Fork Ranch. Item number four is consider the county clerk minutes from the previous meeting, which was January 13th, 2025.
So we.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cresswell. Any comments on the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item number five, consider the treasurer's financial report and updates on securities pledge, treasurer Moll?
No report.
All right. Next item is accept donations for scrapbooks and mats. This is from the Historical Commission. $107.38. We have a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Cresswell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shook. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, we'll move to consider auditors' budget amendments and vouchers payable. Ms. Roberts?
I have vouchers payable. The total today is $182,845.15. And out of the general fund is $131,724.97. Some of the big ticket items, we had given the Royal Fire Department $125,000. We owed them another 25, so that's in on today. Pay for our FLOP 23 audit, it's $25,000. It's on there. The boiler replacement for the one boiler downstairs, $24,782. And Zack Burkett, which comes out of precincts, is $30,195. There's nothing to write for.
Hold on. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, a second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So the next item under the auditor's report is something that I think we're gonna do monthly. Maybe we'll decide we want to do it quarterly, but here at the start, we're gonna do it monthly. Is everyone's, the county's budget and kind of where we are so far in the year. So we're roughly a third of the way through our budget year. And thought it'd be interesting to see kind of where everyone stands. And I had a few things that I flagged. In the county attorney, the secretary's salary and state supplement is out of whack, but I think that's an accounting issue in that we're not, we're double budgeting the salary in the secretary's salary slot, and we're not putting anything in the chief assistant's.
Guys, yeah, we've corrected that.
Okay.
Pointed out, we had two being paid out of the same line.
That's what it looked like to me, so I'm glad to hear that. The other thing I noted in the sheriff's department is overtime. We're already at 42% on the year. And holiday pay, we're at 76% of the year. And I know we increased the budget on that, but we've seemed to have gotten really out of whack on that.
Well, we've already ate Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's, a lot of the big holidays up.
Well, hopefully, that's the case. That could be the case, because we also have the same thing in, what is this, the jail? No, dispatch overtime is at 70, almost 77% of his budgets are even spent for overtime. 55% on holiday pay. And then in the jail, we're at 68% on holiday pay. The good news, and I know last year we had a problem with the food, we're spot on on the food in the jail right now. And we were, you know, we didn't budget enough last year. So I think it looks like we did a good job budgeting for the food in the jail. Another thing I wanted to point out was inmate medical. Marsha's doing a great job on that. You really are doing a good job on that.
Same.
Dental's a little out of whack right now, so we apparently have a bad teeth problem in the jail right now.
I only do extractions, remember?
So maybe we could talk about flossing and brushing a little bit more, Sharon? At night, when you read on our goodnight bed stories?
Yeah, we'll work on that.
And then Commissioner Shook, you had planned this, that you front-loaded a bunch of your projects, but you're a little bit, you're at 61% on road materials for the year. And then I know you had that fancy project, which adds you a little bit over there. But just, everyone else seems like they're within a bed of tolerance, staying within their budget so far. Congratulations, so far you've been.
Appreciate it.
Good job. Has anyone else seen anything in there? I do think it's a good exercise for us to look at this. And the answer may be quarterly, but right now, we'll do it monthly for a little while.
It's been a little over a quarter now, but I mean, if we want to do it the second meeting of every month, I mean, that's, I'm sure, bullish.
I might be bullish. Close by the end of the year on my building maintenance with the project I had going in the first of the year.
You look like you're running a little over.
I think it's gonna slow down, but we got a few small things we gotta finish up, and so.
Well, this is a tool that we can actually stay on top of the budget a little bit better. So thank you for putting this together.
Well, we did put money in the wrong line online at the first of the year.
Didn't?
And so.
So I can always move it up.
But she has to move it up whenever I need to spend it. I don't know, you'd like to put some stars on there for.
So anything else on that we want to talk about, or we'd like to move to the next item? All right, let's move to item number seven, which is discuss and consider the first quarter of fiscal year 2025, Young County Arena Financial Report and further to authorize the disbursement of $28,032.92 in support of the arena's first quarter operating deficit per the current lease agreement between Young County Commissioners Court and the City of Graham. City Manager Garrity?
Thank you, Judge. Members of the court, it's a pleasure to be back before you day and give you an update on how we're doing on the arena. I did notice a little later on the agenda that Commissioner Craig is being nominated to officially join us out of the arena board. I'm not sure whether to offer congratulations or condolences, but we'll certainly value his input and experience out there. I hope that you do allow him to serve on the board. He'd be a great asset. So on this paper here that you have, the Graham logo on top, I'll just cover the bottom line up front. Year-to-date revenues at the arena are just over $140,000. Year-to-date expenses are just under $200,000, which creates a deficit for the first quarter of $56,065.84. You may remember, commissioners that were here, we've been through a cycle of this. First quarter is the revenues don't come in as much because there's not as many events and the holidays and all that in there will usually run a first-quarter deficit. We're hoping to kind of take that down as we get into more events. And when I come back to you in April and May, maybe still be a deficit, but we don't anticipate it being. I think we'll see that every year. That's gonna kind of be the cycle of the first quarter will run a deficit. So per the lease agreement, that deficit is split evenly between the city, represented by the Graham Economic Improvement Corporation, and the county. So what we're asking for today is reimbursement of that operating deficit as the judgment in the agenda item, $28,032.92.
What percentage of that is related to the concert?
The expense right there, we wound up paying for the stage, which that wound up being just short of, I got the exact figure, Commissioner Judge, but it was just short of about $15,000. And you will see that reflected on the expense report on the second page, the one at the very bottom, that other materials and supplies, that's why they're so high.
Got it.
So if you could, Judge, I'll just get into the line item very quickly. On the first page at the top is the revenues, the thing that I want to highlight to you there, where it says Young County Support Arena and GEIC Support Arena at account numbers 46015, 46016. Our total budget for the year is $125,000. That's what was approved in the county budget. You'll see that the county has reimbursed just short of $15,000. That's the accounting of crossing the fiscal year boundary, so that reflects the fourth quarter payment from the previous fiscal year. You see there your bottom line once again. Actual revenues we booked were $141,314. Want to highlight a couple of things in the expense side. Worker's comp went up just a little bit, it's $74 difference. I would like to note that we keep track of all the accounting on behalf of the arena. The city, I've got a budget ordinance in for the council meeting this Thursday, and I'm gonna start making some of these adjustments, so it'll be accurately reflected. The arena budget over there, if anybody wants to see the same printout like you were just doing on the arena, we keep up with exactly the same thing. It looks exactly the same. Looking down at that next highlighted one, at account 2023, electrical plumbing. This is related, you may remember Councilman Craig, I think you mentioned before, we ran a whole bunch of problems with gas lines out at the arena. Had to replace a bunch of gas lines, redo a bunch of valves. That ran us around $8,000 to $9,000, and that's that big 8341 number that you see there. We are moving some money around to bring that back up to speed and then leave them with enough to do other electrical plumbing things throughout the fiscal year. We already covered the one at the bottom, that big number that you see there, was for the rental of the stage for the concert. Concert wound up, if you don't count that, concert wound up losing right around $3,000, $1,000. We're still adjusting some of the numbers. I went back and audited it, and we're gonna talk to the arena board about that. But it didn't make money like we wanted it to. That's the bottom line, but we're adjusting that to go along. Any questions on the first page? Moving quickly to the second page. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things down there toward the bottom, at account 4,002 and 4,031. On 4,002, that $12,000 that you see there, we're gonna, the lead-ups and the road and shoots out there are just about unserviceable. And so, we're gonna keep that in there. But you see that big number there on street alleys and ground, that $50,300? We had originally planned to do a two-phase project to put in stall mats in the bottom of the stalls out there. This is a huge project. The livestock, particularly the horses, they dig out the ground out there, create holes, it's a safety hazard. Commissioner Wiley and the arena manager came up with a great project to regrade all that and then put down rubber matted. And we've already had our first event with Commissioner Wiley. I think we got some really good feedback on that. It's definitely approved. We planned to do two-phase, but now we had the arena concert and that issue there, and then we also had the gas line. We're gonna move some money around and live within our budget, and let's see how the second quarter goes. I may be coming back to you when I do my forecast like y'all are doing when we come back in the second quarter. We may have to ask for a little more money. I'm hoping that we don't to make it through the year, but I just wanted to put that on your radar. We get some one-time expenses, so we're working on preparing a slump on the, preparing the engine on the back truck. We're just getting hit with a lot of one-time expenses, and it's stuff that would require to keep the arena going, but we're gonna try to bring back more money there. Mr. Wiley?
So that's true. The thing about this arena is it's fixed in this way for safety and the law and type. So that's worth a lot. Plus, we're gonna go up a little bit more in stall prices.
So looking at your bottom line once again, we're asking for the Young County contribution of $28,033 to offset that operating deficit. Be accurate.
Yeah, no, we budgeted this. Looks like we're kind of on track of what we've budgeted so far. Any questions here? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the payment of $28,032.92 to the City of Graham for our half of the arena deficit.
I'll second.
Motion from Commissioner Cresswell, second from Commissioner Shook. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We'll move to item number seven. Discuss and consider issues related to the sheriff's antenna on the tower and the fact that the antenna will be removed before April 30th. Additionally, discuss and consider a new contract for tower space for our equipment. Basically, an update for people that don't know. On Friday, we got the sheriff's department dispatch received an alert that the power source to our emergency equipment was cut. We have an eight-hour battery, so we had eight hours to try to figure out what was going on. And what we determined was that a crew was removing our equipment off of a tower because they were removing the tower. They had lost their lease to the tower, and they were removing the tower. And they said they tried to notify us, but it was minimal efforts at best. So the sheriff quickly sent some people down there and explained to them it was a felony to remove emergency equipment. They stopped, they reconnected our power source, but it's, the tower's going away. So it necessitate, it requires us now to try to find a new place. Commissioner Wiley jumped on it. He found a new location for us. And don't want to necessarily say where it is for security reasons, but I want to discuss that contract. Is our tower out here?
Yes.
Because we do have some questions.
Yes.
About what all can go on there. And so, I mentioned in the open session that Commissioner Wiley and I started working on a grant to try to get a generator to provide backup power. Are we, in addition to our equipment, can we put our, if you want to explain exactly what it is?
Young County Amateur Radio Club would like to put a repeater on that tower, an analog repeater.
I was thinking that y'all were on that tower at one time. Were you?
We have a tower out in the location. We're looking for another, we are looking for another tower within the county right now to put up a third repeater.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can definitely look at that. We've got room on that tower for additional equipment, so we just have to look at that and, you know, see where we are on.
Could they give you back onto our?
Well, they can't give you back on the antenna or anything because we need, you know, maximum power going out to your equipment. They would have to install another antenna. And I do know that, you know, one of our other towers around that we have in the past allowed, you know, AM operators and AM systems to go on our towers.
Right, we bring a total package of power for backup power, the whole main.
Yeah, I mean, we just, that would be something I had to get the general manager of the company.
Okay.
And for me, I don't see an issue with that, but we do have, you know, plenty of room on the power. And just have to give a feeling.
Excellent. But we're looking for about two or three other locations across the county right now. That's just one. Thank you.
So, let's see. Just some details. This will be more expensive than what we're currently spending, because I'm gonna say it was, was it 1,400 bucks a year we were paying at the old location? And then this is gonna be?
Forty-eight.
$4,800 a year with a 3% increment every year. I think, was it a five-year contract?
Yes.
This last week.
Yeah, five years.
Forgotten some of the details.
The good thing about it, though, is either the distance or the height, it's gonna be probably another 249 foot.
Yes, the base of the tower is roughly 200 foot, you know, more elevation, and then the tower's, you know, 40, 49 foot?
449.
Yeah.
So we were estimating anywhere between 220 and 250 feet higher.
Yeah.
Which is gonna help us. I think it's a good deal. I'm excited about it. I'm really thankful we came together so quickly, and I appreciate y'all working on it. I thought the whole thing was a positive thing. I mean, the sheriff's department jumped on it, the City of Graham jumped on it. I mean, everybody, volunteer fire departments jumped. I mean, we had people looking for solutions and trying to solve the problem really, really quickly.
The positive thing about it is we have two other locations now, two with repeaters for SNO and for the volunteer fire department. Officially puts a third one out in another location over in the western part of the county. Which when we do that with what we've got, it's gonna even help with reception. The mobile should be able to talk all over the county with a lot of extra elevation.
Yes.
But what's gonna help you is if you're out there on that stock or you're on that fire truck and you're using your handheld, you'd be able to have a connection with the handheld because of that repeater. It's another positive about it.
So Timmy was out sick on Friday. It doesn't look like the contract made it into our package. So.
I have actually got copies of the contract.
Did you pass the contract out? I had the contract, but Timmy being out, it didn't make it into our package. I'm just looking to see if it got slipped in at the back, but it did not. Thank you. Yeah, so item number three is, it's $400 a month, which makes it $4,800 a year with a 3% increase year on year. Five-year contract, 2025 to, is that a four-year contract? It's four-year contract. It's four-year contract. Utilities included. How long will it take to get it up and running?
Well, that's something that we were kind of, I spoke with the sheriff on Friday on this. You know, y'all currently have, you know, lining antenna up at this current site, and we discussed Friday, you know, getting new line antenna in. Originally, when this come up, when this hit us, we thought about, well, we can just relocate real quick. But since they have given us a little extra time, I suggest, you know, go ahead and order a new line and antenna for the new site. And.
We don't have downtime.
Yeah, there's no downtime whatsoever. And I believe, you know, I've got the antenna in stock. I've ordered that line, seven-eighths coax, ordered that as needed, and it usually takes about two weeks in. So after I get the okay, we, we have you up two to three weeks maximum.
Do y'all have the crew that can put it on the tower?
Yes, yes.
Because if we needed somebody, Zito said they had plenty of people they could refer us to, to climb the tower, to get our stuff down and put it up. But can y'all help us get our stuff down when we need to?
Well, I mean, I just, you know, there was another emergency situation when we went on the tower, when you guys went on the tower where you're currently at. We donated some line for that tower. So that line that's up on that tower is probably, you know, you went up, I looked the other day, you went up on that tower in twenty-fourteen. That line was probably already fifteen, twenty years old.
It's probably time to put it.
Yeah, it's, it's time to put new line up.
It's probably not worth going up there.
It's not worth spending any tire crew or any money on the county.
To get our old stuff?
To get your old stuff.
Even the, even the equipment out there?
Well, the equipment, now the repeater, you know, it's a Project Twenty-Five repeater. It's a current model and everything. Yeah, we, we need to go ahead and get that repeater, yes.
Okay. But leave the cables?
Yes.
Okay.
By doing that, all you got to do is they do that when our time is where we want it and want to, which is what you get the equipment. But then it's, it's up running that flat.
Yeah, the only downtime is the, the trip between the sites.
Well, just pick a, pick a calm day. Can we predict that, Sheriff?
On Friday at seven o'clock in the evening.
We have any questions about this? I mean, I think, I mean, I think it's fair and I think it's something that we, we need to do. Do we have a motion to approve the lease agreement? We have a motion for Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Craig. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. We'll execute this contract. Thank you so much.
And since we didn't budget for that action, we moved money out of contingency into that line to pay out.
Yeah, and we also, I think I'm going to have some emergency management money left. We didn't have quite a fire season this year, and so there's going to be some emergency management money that we might be able to use for that.
Okay.
Give us a product, give us a kind of a ballpark on the antenna and the coax.
Yes, I'll, I'll shoot you on email.
That might be a place, that might be a place to take it. Almost time for the public hearing, but we'll, you know, the next on the agenda is discuss and consider the women who clap for middle-tier states. That's going to probably take a little longer than we need when we got the public hearing at ten. So if you are okay, I'm going to skip that and I want to skip the stellar farm because that's going to take a little while. And we can move to item number twelve. Discuss and consider a resolution to keep the countywide polling place program. Caitlin Mosley, is she here? So she's not here. So she has supplied us with a resolution. And what's going on is the state of Texas at this session, they're proposing a law or legislation that will remove countywide voting, which means if you live in a precinct, right now, if you live in precinct one, I'm making up a number, you can vote in any of the precincts in the county. So if you live in one precinct but work in another, you can vote where you work. But the state attack of someone, someone in our legislature is proposing that we get rid of that and you have to vote in your precinct. Under the, you know, they're trying to reduce voter fraud is what they're trying to do, but for a county like us, that would, would be very expensive. And at NorTex, they were talking about it, and it was a big issue with NorTex. Caitlin's brought it up. It's a big issue with her, and she is asking for our support on this resolution. I'll read the resolution. What resolution number is it? Does it tweet on yours? This is the resolution. Item number, well, you have it in mind. Well, resolution number in that court. Regarding the elimination of countywide polling place program, state of Texas County of Young in the Commissioners' Court. Whereas Young County has participated in the countywide polling program since 2016, and whereas Young County has eight voting precincts and provides five polling locations, and whereas countywide voting system does not eliminate voter registration by precinct, and whereas Young County is a rural county, many of, many of our constituents take advantage of the ability to vote on election day in a location of their choice through the countywide polling place program. And whereas, as a rural county, many of our constituents, I can't say that word, works outside the county and use the countywide voting program as a necessary convenience to vote without having to adjust their work schedules. And whereas the use of the countywide polling place program has increased voter turnout and reduced the number of provisional ballots. And whereas the county polling place program allows the county to provide election day voting to all the voters during a time of, during a time of an emergency. And whereas countywide polling program provides a cost-saving to Youngs County and its municipalities. And whereas countywide polling program requires the use of e-poll books as authorized by the Texas Legislature through the Texas Election Code, section thirty-one point oh-one-four. And whereas e-poll books allow voters to sign in while confirming identity through official identification and confirming voters have not already voted via absentee ballots or another polling location, thus dramatically reducing voter fraud and improving wait time for voters. And whereas Young County has utilized e-poll books since 2016. And whereas e-poll books provide reports to issue daily required reports, data to the Secretary of State and post on the county election websites. And whereas the Commissioners' Court of Young County is of the opinion the countywide polling place program is beneficial to the voters and it would be a disservice to the voter, voting community, reduce voter turnout, and could disenfranchise a large number of voter if eliminated. And now therefore be a resolve that the Commissioners' Court of Young County hereby opposes the elimination of countywide polling place program, the elimination of e-poll books, and the elimination of ballot marking devices by the Texas Legislature. Pass and approve this twenty-seventh day of January, 2025. I do believe definitely most rural counties will be approving this. I don't know about Harris County, Dallas County. I mean, that's where, that's where the, the people that are having problems with it, it's, it's those big municipalities. So it's going to hurt the rural counties and, you know, I don't know. Maybe it helps some, I don't know.
A lot of the problems we have with a lot of our stuff is we don't have the people who want to volunteer to work these polls. And anytime you take it out of the words, make it easier for everybody to vote, it's not a good thing.
Are we in favor of this?
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
That would make us add several more polling places too, if we have to do that.
But to me, if you have to do away with your, your polling equipment and everybody else, like the e-books and stuff like that, that's, that's not a good thing. That's more secure to do away with them, so.
Now, hopefully that'll die, but, you know, sometimes bad legislation gets proposed. I think this, at least for us, this is bad legislation. All right, let's go to the public, item number ten, the ten a.m. public hearing to discuss the planning for our state streets for all grant. If you are, if you are here for this grant, it is crucial that you sign up on our sign-up sheet. The, the way these grants work is you have to demonstrate that there's public support for, for this, or else they won't grant, they won't issue a grant. And so I did a, I had a letter of support campaign and we got quite a few letters of support, but we're going to have to have, this public hearing is a fact that people will show up to talk about it. So thank you for coming. Zach, do you want to start us off? Or Joe, who wants to, who wants to start us off as far as the process and what all we're doing?
Is there any way we can put the?
We can.
Anyway, I'm Zach. Zach Houston, I'm the air arm. I've got him on a jump drive.
Okay.
Do we want to pull it up here? Do we need to pull it up here at the time?
Uh-uh.
Do I? I'll be lying my spot. That was seven thirty.
Would you like to start off? Either way you want to.
Why don't you, why don't you make some introductions?
Or you, you do on the, and I'll step in once we get to the very part. You got the charts and.
No, just that, it's like a seven or eight.
That part, no, that's, that's from our trial.
While we're working on that, there is a federal grant available for governmental entities to apply for money to help correct situations in the roads. They can do it in several methods. The county commissioners here chose to do a multi-jurisdictional approach, which means that the county and the cities hard work together to get a grant that will cover roads in the county and streets and roads in the cities. It is based primarily around safety issues. How do we make the roads safe for, for travelers, pedestrians, children? And how are we going to undertake that? There are two component parts to the grants. The first grant will be a planning grant request. Estimated value is in the neighborhood of two-hundred-thousand dollars. It'll take about a year for that planning grant for the engineers that will be hired to do that, to review the data, to look at the roads, to map out a program of how they should be improved and what that estimated cost for approval will be. Once that is accomplished, then the next grant will be the implementation grant. And that's where you ask for the money to do the work you planned. In, in and around our area, four to six million is not an unusual number. So, you know, we're not worried about that phase right now. But it is one that we have to show a lot of detail, a lot of work. Zach has put together, I don't know how many maps, how many charts, how much data. With Zach's work, we can tell you how many car wrecks were on Watch Street every year for the last ten years. But that's the kind of documentation we've got to have in order to make the planning grant work. And then again, it has to have the support of you, the citizens, that you want these things. Do, do you need a new surface? Do you need a new road liner? Do you need it wide? Do you need a stop sign or a red light? Do you need a school zone loading? All of these things will come into play as we move through the planning grant. With that. Okay, so if you're not familiar with what we've been doing so far, the county passed a resolution enacting a mission zero goal, basically, to reach an objective by 2045 to reduce fatal and serious crashes. We formed a group in the, in the county. We call it the Transportation Improvement Committee. It comprises of myself, a couple of the commissioners, Lane Kramer's on it with us. And we meet monthly and go over and discuss these agenda items that are part of the application package for this grant that we're, that we're trying to see. Couple of examples of some of the data that Joe mentioned we're going through. It's, a lot of it is crash data. A lot of it is from our crash record database. I'm able to use different kind of tools to organize and sort that data to look at different trends or to try to identify specific concerns or areas of concern for us to focus on with the, with the grant application. This next picture is kind of a copy or a screenshot of kind of what one of those tools looks like. Those are mapped crashes all over the county. And on the right, the, the crash reports have the different cause, causes of the crashes and what type they were, whether or not they were at intersections, whether the weather was bad, whether it was dark or daylight. All of those things we've been using, as Joe talked about, to discuss ways to put this data together to prove that we're addressing safety concerns with, with the project that we're applying for. So this is kind of a list of some of the stuff that, that we've been doing. The top three are basically safety analysis, using that crash data, trying to identify where the worst crashes are. That's what that injury network is about. About half the crashes that occur in the county are at intersections. We take that data and we're, we're further analyzing, you know, what, what kind of crashes they are, what kind of intersections, and trying to make a list of priorities there. Part of the grant application is to make sure we use, or try to identify underserved communities, mostly using census data and other government data sources to try to identify whether or not we can have any sort of project or to, to help any kind of underserved community that we identify. Some additional data that we're using is supplied by the, by local law enforcement dispatch data. We've looked at where our, our fires have been occurring over the past several years. We've got some other ideas from some other data sources that we can use in this, in this collaboration. Public engagement, collaboration, that's what we're doing today. That's what we're here for, is to seek input on this process. And the last three are kind of the outcomes. You know, we look at what we're going to be able to do for, for policy or processes within the county or municipal governments to address roads and road safety, road bridge safety projects. That's what we're aiming for with this grant, is to, is to identify stuff we can actually do, right? Projects that we can do to increase safety. And the last one is just an ongoing way to, to keep track of what we're up to, right? We want to be transparent with what we're, with what we're doing and the progress that we're making on that goal. If the judge doesn't have anything else, or I guess any of the other committee members, the big, the main thing what we're here for is to seek public input.
Yeah, we're basically what, what we've been, we've been, as a committee, we've been meeting at least monthly and we've, we've been identifying where we think some of the problems are. But, you know, we're interested to hear where you think some of our problems are and what are some of the things you'd like to see improved? And we're going to make a list of that to add, you know, to add to our, you know, to add to our request. So if anyone would like to kick us off, and again, I know some people have come in late, please, please, please sign up and state on there that you're here for the road safety portion of this meeting because that's what we're going to have to send in on our grant application to demonstrate that, that we do have public interest in this. So does anyone have an, an area that they, Johnny?
My name is Johnny Thor. I serve on the city portion of this in conjunction with Zach and Mr. Derry. And Zach provides us with the same information. So my concern only is safety. I've been a citizen of the Young County for seventy-five years, and I have the right to come to town and feel safe, to shop, to do whatever, to go back home. I'm now a citizen of the city. So those are the things that, the only thing I want to stress is this is also a recent So, those are the things that, the only thing I want to stress is, this is also a regional problem. Because we have traffic coming through here, it's only played to another area. And it, you know, it creates an additional burden on our highway system, on the street system. So, as long as this effort moves more or in a regional area, I think it would make the safest conditions for citizens of this town and area to attack. As you can see, I've been having problems being short.
Thanks, Johnny. Please.
I'm Dan Steele, live on Flat Rock Road. And we have, uh, some of the roads is not too bad, it's quite a chat. Creates a real foggy problem, which creates, you can't see very well if you're following somebody. We have some paved roads that are in really bad shape, a lot of potholes that are really dangerous. And the traffic on that road, the volume is higher than it's ever been in my entire life. And I've been out there for years and years. So, it, it creates a really dangerous situation. People don't have a drive out there, they don't know where the edge of the road is, so they stay out in the middle of it. It, it is not a good situation, we really need some help.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Judge Graham, I live out, or was raised out here in South Bend. Two issues. One is FM seven oh one between South Bend and Alasville. That Alasville road has not been broadened since I was a little kid that lived at Alasville. And I'm surprised TexDOT hasn't done something to widen that road a little bit on both shoulders between South Bend and Alasville. Now, they've gone in and replaced the bridges. But the road itself is pitiful. And a second one is FM, no, I'm sorry, Highway sixty-seven at South Bend. I've had TexDOT out there, they've done their testing several years ago with their radars about trying to get, I've tried to get them to slow down the speed limit from the north side of South Bend to south of the fire station. And they even said that from, that they went in two different occasions and ran radar, I think they set fifteen minutes at a location throughout that strip from the north side of South Bend to south of the fire station down on Highway sixty-seven. And they clocked some people through that area at eighty-eight miles an hour. Now, I know that TexDOT, and they didn't want to do nothing. It boiled down to, I don't think we'd have enough accidents in that area. I've since then found out how to get that resolved. But there's no reason for TexDOT cannot slow down seventy-five mile an hour plus speed limit down to say sixty-five, similar to what they've got over in German and other towns in the area. But it's, we've had several wrecks out there that's been pretty bad. And it's really time that we've got rumble strips on both shoulders and center line. But the bottom line is, is to speak.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Please, hey, Tom?
Good morning, uh, Tom Parker, I'm here as the member of economic development, all the economic development. We're working on a project for Main, Main Street downtown revitalization. And one of the things that's been discussed with our, the engineering group that we hired is acquiring of that strip. There's about three blocks in town that we're working on and trying to bring retail and some other things back into that area. Unlike Graham, we don't have a square. And so, we're, we're looking to take the intersection of Grand and Main Street and make that our square. Anyone that's been in Olney, we're on, that's one fourteen running through there and, and at different parts of day and night, trucks run through there at a pretty aggressive speed. We need to be cognizant of the size of the loads that are going to be there. But we're looking to, looking to appeal for some, some work on maybe some islands that would be placed middle of the blocks, not to interfere with the turn lanes and whatnot, but just to narrow some spots on Main Street. We've got funding, we've got engineering, we're going to work with Zach and his group to see what we can do on that. I just, I'm linked to this game, I didn't know that this was, this was even happening until about two weeks ago. But, um, that's a, that's a speed and safety issue, that's, that's all over the county. I've been here fifteen years, it's, it's everywhere, it's not just where we are, everyone's got that issue. But, um, I want to applaud TexDOT, this is just one thing, is Texas Economic Development. TexDOT has made it a mission that instead of trying to get traffic through places, they are now looking at trying to get people to stay within their community, making it safer within their community. So, this program is right in line with that. Zach and his group, they're going to do a great job because they've, they've been doing it great, Charlie. Anything we can do from Olney's side, we'd, we'd love to do it and look forward to working with people.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Please, Eric?
Judge, for the resident here, Gary, City Mayor Graham. I just wanted to say, as Johnny Ford mentioned, the city does have a Transportation Improvement Committee. We've been focusing primarily on, for those that travel through Graham, Elm Street, and we get a lot of truck traffic through there and those types of things. We're working on a separate project on that. And I do want to applaud TexDOT once again, like the previous speaker of, they've been fantastic access on the committee. We're working on a couple of different things there. I did want to make a differentiation in case it comes up and the public gets confused. At the city council meeting on Thursday, we're talking about another grant that's through TexDOT. But that's through the Transportation Alternative Program that deals primarily with sidewalks. So, I just want to make the clarification, it's two different things, it's not two people going after, two different entities going after the same thing. For your list, Judge, the, the one that comes to me that the city still has an interest in, up along FM three double oh three, was essentially the Lake Lotte Road. Commissioner Wiley and other commissioners have done some great work up there. But I think there might be some easy fixes that folks have asked for, additional signage, showing crossings. And we've done some great work at the boat ramp. And if you would kind of put that on your list as far as possibly lighting that entrance and some additional signage there. Thank you.
I will echo the comments, TexDOT has been amazing to work with. And Zach is, I mean, when he, when he says he's going to help you, he is all in. And thank you, Zach. You've been, you've been wonderful. Anything else to put on the list? Please. Hi, is that Jennifer? Hey, Jennifer.
Um, I was going to give you this.
Please.
Nathan.
Yeah, bring it up.
Because I'm not listening. I probably say too many words and he makes it look like.
Oh, good, good.
So, I thought this makes it easier for.
And have you signed in?
I did.
Perfect. What, what, what vote is this?
This is awful, this is sixty-seven. I, I've lived in Young County for almost fifteen years. And I, um, I primarily lived outside of the county or outside of that town. But we also have lived in around the town for four years. So, I had been living in town and not going out of town. And I realized, going back, um, and driving regularly on sixty-seven, how awful it is. And how people are very pushy behind you when you're trying to turn off Lower Com Valley Road. And it's a pretty major road, I think, up there as far as I know, with a lot of residents. And I feel like there's a lot of blind spots at places where if you didn't understand them, you could hit someone. Which happened at the, I think, maybe three years ago. You guys remember a motorcycle accident? And if you really look at how everything's laid out, which might happen, with residents and such things, we were just asking for it to be pushed to slow down to fifty-five or sixty, a little bit further out past Lower Com Valley Road. Which actually, I feel like Lower Com Valley Road is at forty-five and is a... It just doesn't feel even safe there when there's so many children, but with the residences. Sorry, I am really nervous.
Don't be nervous.
No, but I'm really.
This is, this is, we're all friends.
This is oddly, I'm very passionate about the fact that I've always felt like this was a very dangerous place and people don't understand, I put my signal on a half a mile before I turn. But I still get people, they get very upset. And I don't think it's wide enough for the turning lane. And so, therefore, I feel like when my husband puts down, um, if we slow down the speed limit, how many seconds actually adds to your journey? It's not a lot, it's how he explained to my children how to follow the speed limits. Because you're talking about minutes, not as much as people think.
You don't save as much time as you think.
No, you don't. And I think a lot of people don't even understand that. So, I guess I want to even save a life, which could easily save a life or an accident. I think there's a lot of accidents that happen on sixty-seven and... I mean, I don't think that's because of the speed limits, because they seem to happen as they come out of town. But, anyway. And I had, I wanted to talk to someone about this, and then I saw your Facebook post.
Well, perfect, well, thank you.
All your posts.
Well, we're going, we'll add that to the list, thank you so much, Jennifer.
I'm here, sorry, I believe.
Okay, well, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? These are, this is wonderful.
One other thing I'd like to point out. This is the only county in our region that is doing this work. The only one of the eleven. And I've gotten word that, which Top Falls MPO may be looking at doing this grant as well. But, anyway, understand how important this is. Setting, setting new boundaries, new goals.
I mean, I don't know if we, Joe, when you introduced yourself, did you mention you were our grant writer?
No, I'm not.
So, we, we have, Joe is, um, former city administrator in Olney, but he's, he's a grant writer. And we've hired him to be our grant writer, um, on, we have him on retainer. And he helped us get the mental health grant that the sheriff's department has won. And, um, we're implementing, um, we're going to be implementing some, some mental health response units and, and safeguards and training. But, and then now we're going to try to tackle this problem. But just, if you didn't recognize Joe, that's, that's, or you recognized Joe, that's why you recognized him. He used to, he used to be a resident. Anyone else like to, Ellen?
I'm Ellen Morris and I'm a longtime resident of Graham. I'm focused on the Graham community and safety issues. I live in the south part of Graham, behind Walmart of Cherokee Loop, which is where Hillcrest comes down and goes to the pit cop edition. Since that has been opened, the traffic has increased enormously. And there is a stop sign at the top of Hillcrest and Thomas. And there is a stop sign, which is not on there very often, at Carolina and Hillcrest, going down the hill. I have observed cars going in excess of sixty miles an hour. Now, in the olden days, when there were very few of us down there, it was not a significant problem. Now, there are children there.
Primarily mom. Not nickel or cinnamon.
This has been a huge concern to me. And there are animals and there are people who walk, it's a very walkable area. I would like to see something done more patrolling. But in our, this issue is, I think, a safety issue and needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Number two, Par, may I say two things?
Yeah, of course.
Most of you know.
You can have three if you want.
Number two, as a longtime resident of Graham, I'm very much aware that there are places that have huge dips. Texas Street comes to mind. And Carolina and Tennessee and anywhere you go through that section, which is part of the underground water issue, because those were also huge flood problems when it rains. Up to, my daddy called it Mad Creek, there at Cherry and South. That dip on Texas, I cannot believe there have not been accidents there. You have to have lived here a long time to know, slow down or don't go on Texas. Because, um, it is just incredible. Those are, that line through there that I think needs to be considered in this safety part. Thank you.
Judge Graham. Of course you can, Tommy.
The one thing I lived out the last time, whoever wrote the terms for this project, they put safety for all, that's what this is about.
Yes.
So, that's one.
Yeah, I agree with that a hundred percent. Another thing, we're including the, the city of Newcastle, they, they've got some street issues we're, we're including down in this process. Does anyone else? I'm so thankful for everyone, please, please.
Hi, I'm Scarlett Littner, and I'm going to add to Jennifer's comment in regards to Highway sixty-seven. As we know, you start off at three eighty, forty-five coming out of town, then it goes to fifty-five. Once you pass the Murray Y, was it seventy oh one?
Two oh one, two oh eight.
Anyway, um, it goes to seventy-five. I think it should be a progressive thing. I've called TexDOT myself, because I have almost been rear-ended by a tractor trailer, because it's right on a curve where I, before a curve where I have to turn, and they don't slow down. And there's not enough road for them to go to the side and pass you. So, I've had to accelerate and get out of the way and find another place to go. So, I think that needs to be a progressive speed limit. If you're going forty-five, fifty-five, go to sixty-five. And at least if not past, um, Meadowland Chapel Road. Because there's a lot of children, a lot of school buses and everything, and that's something that I'm concerned about. That's my biggest concern, is that.
Thank you, we'll put that down. Anyone else?
As we've noticed, a lot of people here are talking about city and state highways. This also includes our county roads, uh, narrow bridges, things of that nature.
Water crossings.
Water crossings, they're going, it's, it's also includes parts of the county that we're not talking about here today. So, if you live out on a county road and really need something like that, like Mr. Hearn here, we've got narrow bridges there, I put those up. Uh, Lane Kramer actually sets my spot on this board, because we can't have that many commissioners and the judge all on here together. So, uh, Lane has stepped in and graciously took my spot. So, if you can think of things that you really think are important on county roads, they need to be brought up here too. And so, uh, don't just think of city and state highway, think of county roads. Which we've had some brought up on Flat Rock, which we know that's planned, we want, I want to mill it up, but I just, there's some things that we haven't got to.
I should bring up county roads. I'm going to jump on Scott Shook right now.
Have it.
You're in the firing line now, my friend. South Bend Cemetery Road. When it gets muddy, you have to have a four-wheel drive or a tractor to get to the cemetery. I've got pictures. And if you would go out there and see that road, you know, you need to know right now, you've got a lot of people that's buried out there that lives on that road that have got you behind an eight ball. I was going to catch up a few later this week, but since Mr. Presswell brought it up. Whenever the road is the length of the.
Is it, is it rock or dirt, or, is it a rock road or a dirt road?
It's a rock and dirt.
Rock and dirt.
It used to be. It used to be a pretty good road. But I would hate to have a funeral and have to drag a hearse to the cemetery because it's gotten so bad. And it's the majority of that road. The landowner of the Templeton's, his wife, she got back, was coming out, couldn't get out in her Suburban, two-wheel drive. So Jerry Branch, his hired hand, took a tractor and drug her up that ridge to get her to the, uh, white road where she could get out. She sits there and has to buy her four-wheel drive Suburban. There's over half a million dollars in houses sitting over there, are close to it, and they can't even get to it. The people that's buried in that cemetery and the people that's a family are not at all happy with Scott Shook. Scott, you and I need to get together and go look at that road. Now, I'm gonna do this in a few days and bring my pictures in, but Mr. Cresswell, he had a nerve whenever he said county roads. And for you not to take better care of that road is pretty bad for our county commissioner.
There's more than just one road in your, your racing.
Whenever I was over there the other day, the end of December, to take pictures after we'd had about, I think it was an inch range. You had to have two maintainers to drive and drag that little old one-lane road. When that second maintainer could have gone east and maintained that stretch of road, but they both went all the way up to that cemetery and turned around and came back out. When one maintainer could have been going on down, down another part of the county. It's called overkill.
Well, thank you for pointing that out. We can, we'll definitely look at that. What else would we like to address?
Stacy, so this will, this grant will.
They are looking at the bridges. You can ask Lane up Rock. Uh, uh, we've got narrow bridges on Main Ben Road. We've got a bunch of narrow spots on, uh, Rocky Mall. We've got, we had them looking at yours right down the road from your house. Uh, we are looking at trying to, with this grant, maybe get something up.
Our, our traffic is picked up unreal out there and we have another gentleman sitting in the back that actually lives out there now. We have a great deal of traffic nowadays, don't we?
Yes, sir.
We're carrying traffic all over the county, all the time.
Hey, can you, can you, are you doing the sign book back there?
Yes.
Thank you. So what, what are the reasons we're going for this grant is that we do have a lot of county roads, a lot of county roads, and we have very few tax dollars to address them. And so that's, that's, we're, part of your problem, Lane, is that we're, we're trying to find some money so that we can fix all these roads because everyone's, everyone's road is important to them and everyone's road needs to be at a certain standard. And, um, we just don't have the money to do it right now. So that's why we're, why we're going after this grant, to try to, try to get some more fund stuff.
Remember, this is a planning grant.
Yeah.
It, it is the first step in getting the money to fix it. We have to plan it, identify what the problems are and what the cost of solving those problems might be.
This is gonna be a multi-year. If we, if we are to be, if we're successful, it'll be a multi-year process before we actually get awarded a grant. It's, it's a very difficult process. Please.
My name's Melanie Maggie. I have some experience in law enforcement and traffic collisions. We can reduce speeds, but if we don't have enforcement, it means nothing. Um, I'm not sure how it works as far as local for a traffic unit officer, um, but unless you're present, we know cars aren't gonna slow down. So that's my recommendation.
That's a great point. Now, signs don't mean anything if nobody's enforcing. Thank you for bringing that up.
Jim, quickly, is this going to, and this is the future, but is this going to be anything to help resurface the county roads? And we do have, and we do have a, a bridge on Upper Tom, which is probably pretty narrow. I mean, Gregor can just barely fit through it.
Yep.
And it probably needs to, I mean, we're getting more and more residents up there all the time. And, and I realize it's, it's hard to take care of the roads every day. And Scott, I think you're doing a good job, you know, you've come to help us several times. And, uh, but if this helps towards resurfacing the roads, then we need to go for it, you know?
Yeah, this is, this will go to that, yeah.
Well, we know that the, the counties are growing two to one as far as housing and development. Like, Richers here today, you know, is proposing other housing development in the county. And a lot of these narrow bridges we know about, but there's some of them that are getting overlooked. And by doing this, we're able to acknowledge that these, you know, whether we use county money or we use grant money, we, we've come to realize that there's places that are very dangerous and these, speed is a big factor, you know? But putting up speed signs is a suggestion in most places. And so, um, it just helps us to recognize and from input from y'all, we begin to understand where these places of low crossings, narrow bridges are so that we can address them as the money is available.
Anyone else? Thank y'all so much for coming. Appreciate it. If you have not signed in, please sign in because that's gonna be part of our planning grant application. We want to document that so many people turned out for this, and thank you so much. Appreciate that. Yeah.
Ten-minute reset, and then we'll restart the meeting. Hey, you want your thumb drawback? Zach, you want your thumb drawback?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a tree, that's a tree.
You're talking about that cemetery that Dr. Offra, you're talking about the Murray Cemetery.
Yeah.
So y'all are rocking, rocking, signing, signing, signing. Jerry, have any place that we could get the cat on? See, we have a dog. I mean, I could buy a tank, we could need the tank somewhere. Yeah. Yeah, I know when I done that, Greg, I was hitting the switch, you know, it's a good knee, it's there. You gotta find it, yeah.
February, January, I would say, November, December, January is the busiest time of the year. There was time to turn, turn the year.
I am, well, I'm at the county guard. I want to watch this. I got a lot of respect for people that work in the wreck and stuff. I had my day in place about eight weeks ago.
Alright guys, if we wanna start heading back? I appreciate this. Alright, it's, um, eleven o'clock and we're back in session. Uh, let's go to, we skipped over item number nine, discuss and consider the preliminary plat for Middle Thompson State Precinct One. Robert Register, how are you?
Good, how are you, sir?
What do you got?
I'm gonna be like everybody else, I'm kinda nervous.
Wait on that.
It's better than most of the stuff we get.
So, I've talked to Stacy, I've talked to Quinn. I've got one that says preliminary, I've got one that says home. I've got copies for y'all to look at, whatever else is working right.
So he did everything ten acre? Ten acres, is this the road you made?
Yes, this is the road he built coming in.
It doesn't matter if it's ten acres, because, you know, ten point oh one is you're trying to avoid that.
So this one out here is the nine point nine five. If I need to flush this.
No, 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 because you plowed it. What you plowed it, you're good.
Yeah, these, these actually, they don't have to be ten acre either, because if you do ten oh one, you're trying to avoid the subdivision.
I think we want the ten acres.
You don't need, since you're...
But the way it's plowed it out, just leave it the way it is.
Yeah, it's fine, I mean, it's, it's totally fine.
So we've got the road coming in.
But what is this water, is this off of Lake Graham?
This is a stock tank here.
This is a huge stock tank.
No, this is a flood zone.
Oh, whoa.
But this is not flooded.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In years and years that I've seen.
Just still on the flood plain federally.
And this may be a question for y'all, or maybe not, is there a way to get this flood plain out, since it has it flooded? So what I did here is this road, right here, so I'm all this property. To the, to the, to the property. So, this flood, lot right here, if I did this one at a ten acre, it had too much of a flood. You've got nowhere to build. So I say this L shape, where you can build here. Yeah. So, this stock tank here, I cleaned this creek out, there's a big culvert that comes under sixty seven. Comes here and feeds this thing, and it floods. When I say flood, it feeds the stock tank to my north, which is my house. I've got a twenty foot easement, each utility easement on each side of the road. The water, the water comes from over here, from, from lower tongs, comes up the hill, comes down the fence line. I've got permission from this landowner to tie on to the whole downed up line, come over here. This is gonna be a cul de sac, so it's letting you turn around. Water line up here, run down the south side. And about right here, I've got a crossover that will lead these two lots here. So, so when you enter in, then there's the turnaround. There's a twenty foot utility easement on both sides of the road.
Are you trying to bring this piece of stuff for me to turn?
Yes.
So this is like the Breaker Ridge Highway?
This is the Breaker Ridge Highway.
Remember when we did the subdivision on the far, medium direction?
Yeah.
That's where they're at, and he just drives them over the low.
So I've got, Harley station has got the Middle Thompson State's pretty good stuff. I may be saying this wrong, Peter, everything is good, as long as y'all approve it, and someone would, she approved it number three. What size is the cul de sac? Lane, do you remember how big that cul, or the turnaround was? It's a hundred fifty foot, is that?
I think it was a hundred, but it was, it's in a square diameter, so I think it has to be a fifty.
Is that big enough for a fire truck to turn around?
Yes, sir. What do you say the name of the road is?
Middle.
Middle Thompson State.
Upper, lower, middle.
I don't see much wrong with this plat.
I think this is one of our first plats we've seen. See, you didn't need to be nervous.
Well, so better now that y'all said that.
We've seen crap.
Yes, sir. So the deep restrictions will be similar to South Ranch, the South Ranch. And as far as the county roads, private road, all the landowners will have an undivided interest, they will maintain the road. I believe it, I, I think it should be a nice place. So, before about now, without doing tests, they really looked at it, bare set, somewhere around twelve meters or so. But I've got a loop, lower tongue, and sixteen seven to guess where, to make the loop. I did the same thing with Gibson Lane, I didn't have to plow it, it was making a fake road, it was already a kid road. So I'm gonna say twelve, and we've got seven, seven here, so if this ten acre over here was to do something, or Lane was to do something, I don't care.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
I made a motion.
Motion Scott Chuck, second from Presswell, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero to approve of the preliminary plat, everyone, we all need to sign it? Well, we all need to sign it.
I got some, I got some. We'll, we'll have to sign this. So, but you can, you can take one with it.
You can run with it, but we just gotta put you on the next agenda, to have the final plat finished out. You can take this over there, you pay your dues, whatever you, you have to pay your money wise, then when you come back with your final plat, we sign it.
And then I'll have to have a tax receipt. From the pricing district, if you just go in there and they'll give you a, a certificate.
Price office, get that, and then come back. What is this?
Thank you, Robert.
Did Joe leave?
Yes, he said he could see us tomorrow in here.
No one's aware. Now, now, they're all late for Mike's, you know, four hours. It's like a five trip.
Not that, or you can also welcome my office, either one or the one.
We gotta, when he does state with expenses, I'll take, I'll take, I'll take the whips on.
Thank you, yes.
You just want the clip? You don't joke about that.
Alright, so quit disturbing our meeting, it's like, item number eleven, finally, sorry about that. This is the Titus L C V, that's a, those are numbers, what is that number about to be? What, what is L C V?
The tax for Low Carbon Ventures.
Oh, I thought it was the Roman numeral. To inform and discuss with the Commissioners Court the planned solar project, Tapadaro's Solar and Battery Storage in Southern Young County. So we have Robert Peña and Jeff Ferguson here today. Come on up, gentlemen.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Robert Peña, had a pleasure to meet y'all, and I'm gonna pass this out with me this evening, uh, this morning, this Jeff Ferguson, uh, with Titus L C V. And, uh, we're here to discuss the project.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Here's your credit, I promise you we behave right.
Can I make one for third ticket?
Yes, sir.
So, um, thanks for staying with us. Well, we really appreciate it, and you have a busy agenda, I can tell. And, uh, my colleague, Carl Richter, sends his regards, he's, uh, shoring up some land outside of Midland right now. Um, but my name's Jeff Ferguson, I'm the president of Titus Low Carbon Ventures. Um, I've been developing power projects for thirty years, the first five years I actually developed natural gas power plants with a number of predecessor companies. And, uh, for the last twenty-five years, um, I've been blessed to develop, uh, renewable energy projects, namely wind, solar, uh, most recently stand round, uh, battery energy storage systems, things of that nature. Um, on a personal note, I've got, uh, I'm an A M grad, I don't know if that carries any weight in this part of Texas.
Let's say meeting over, uh, I call it due to item number.
As they say, reap the root. I said that for Judge Grant, but, but I do have five kids that are, have either graduated, uh, or at Texas A and M, or going to go to Texas A and M, so we need to develop a lot of solar projects. I have a beautiful wife of, uh, uh, going on twenty-five years now, and live, uh, on Lake Conra, just, uh, north of Houston. So again, it's privileged to be here, I've known my colleague Robert, uh, almost twenty years, he's been keeping me out of trouble, you know, from a Texas A and M standpoint, on a number of different projects. But, uh, so, back to, uh, Young County, and, uh, the project that we have in the southwest, uh, portion of the county. Um, the Tapadaro's project is slated to be three hundred megawatts, with a two hundred megawatt, uh, uh, onsite battery energy storage system. Um, we, uh, are very excited about the project, it's one of our top tier assets that we have in our portfolio. The company Titus Low Carbon Ventures, uh, is currently, um, working on a portfolio of primarily solar projects, we do have one wind project of over, um, five, five and a half gigawatts, between Texas, Louisiana, uh, Mississippi, and Alabama. And those are our core development areas, and so, uh, as you can, as you can tell, I'm kinda skipping through things, I don't, you know, it, it's not a lot of fun when you just read bullets on page paper, so I'm not doing that. But, we have a, a number of talented employees, they're all very experienced in the renewable development arena of, uh, our employees have amassed, um, over fifty years of collective development experience in the market. And, um, we have successfully financed over nine billion dollars of, uh, renewable energy projects. The, uh, Tapadaro's project, again, is, is one that sort of has risen to the top, um, it's an exciting project, I can, I can tell you from my financing experience, and assure you that we'll be using top manufacturers for the solar panels. Chica Solar is one of them, First Solar is another one, uh, these are not Chinese manufacturers of wind turbines, which is a lot along those lines nowadays. We would probably be applying Tesla or similar battery technology for, uh, the battery component of the project. I, uh, I flew in last night, and I, I met a gentleman waiting for the rental car bus, and I asked him, he was a really distinguished guy, and I said, well, you know, what do you do? And he's like, oh, I travel all over the world, but I live in Canada. And I said, oh, you mean our fifty-first state? I thought that was a lot fun to do, but, uh, anyway, so, you know, long story short, it's, it's, uh, it's privileged to be here, it's privileged to be working, you know. Um, I can assure you that, uh, we treat all of our landowners like partners, we're gonna treat the county like a partner in this development. Um, I'm, we do, we don't have a lot of layers of management, that's why I wanted to kind of meet you today. If you ever have a question, or an, an issue with the project, you can always just pick up the phone and call me directly. And, uh, my contact information is on my business card, as well as in the presentation itself. Um, and so, you know, that's kind of the overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, or talk on, you know, any topic that you would like. Like I said, I, I, I've been in the business back when, you know, wind turbines were a novelty, it was something that you pumped water with. And solar panels were something that you, you had on a fancy calculator on your desk. And, uh, the industry's changed radically, uh, over the last three decades, and, uh, so, happy to share any information that you're interested in.
Before we ask any questions, I need to disclose to the court that my family owns a significant portion of the minerals underneath this solar farm. And we did sign a surface waiver agreement with them that, you know, would result, if they build this farm, in them paying for... would result, if they build this farm, in them paying for us to waive our rights to the service. So, I just want that to be, you know, that I do have a conflict on that.
I think I'd like to echo Jeff's comments by telling you a little bit about Titus. They are, actually Judge mentioned he was a Houston area with his, with a couple of the folks that work within Titus in Houston with Jeff. However, Titus' home office is in Fort Worth, and has been located there, in downtown Fort Worth, CEO Marshall Ickey and the group, and has been at Titus offices there for quite a few years. And so, we're not too far away, or they're not too far away, I should say. Texas Energy is the company that, or my company that has retained to assist through the process of the project. We met Judge Grant, I was back in September, saw him coming into town since about December, providing him brief updates, you know, on and off.
I knew that our court was changing over, and I asked them to wait till January to, to come see us, because I feel like it's fair for Stacy to start it, and then for Alan to come in in the middle of it, then we just asked them to wait till now. What does the E S F stand for?
Battery Energy Storage System.
Those brothers are gonna take up two thousand, two hundred acres, which is gonna take that out of farming ranch and put it into industrial taxes, and the land usage goes to zero, other than for the actual solar farm, right?
Yes. In the, in the project, it needs to be free from taxes, the respective landowners, the rest of the state and the project.
Or ensures that they're made full. In other words, there's no cost to.
Is there, like the wind farms, they have to come in and put a binder or a, to further removal of the windows. Do y'all do the same thing, any of those contracted with them?
And what is your lease, is it a, is it a forty-year lease? How does, what's the structure, is it twenty-five with thirty-five year extensions?
It's, it's thirty with two ten-year extensions.
Thirty plus ten plus ten, and then what's your option period?
On this project, it's five years.
Five-year option.
And the map has the star, but it doesn't have an actual boundary set up on it for the actual project.
It's west.
It's not star shaped, I'm pretty sure.
We will be sharing more detailed information with you, if you're going forward. It is west of the last bill of nineteen seventy-four, but it's, like it's, it's in.
It's not right by the O E.
What's your estimated employment after it's up and running, maintenance people, or what, what are you looking at?
Well, the, the construction of the facility is gonna be the, you know, all restaurants, hotels, people.
But how about that?
Contractors, but after that, first solar farm decides and a best system, you know, probably seven full-time employees.
What would y'all, the average salary maybe close to with those seven employees?
Average salary, probably anywhere between, I would say sixty to eighty thousand dollars.
Would they live in Young County?
They're gonna have to catch you.
But we have a metric that has to be met with the state of Texas workforce on that. Also, you have a close relationship there, I'm ensuring that those minimums are met.
Would they live in county, or would they commute into the county to work on the project?
I would expect them to live inside the county, because it's, it's important that the operating staff is onsite, and, and so most of them will.
The range you're gonna be in, is it pretty wooded, or pretty flat, or?
Very flat.
Very flat.
Yeah, very flat, as, as a matter of fact, if it's, if it's got a, a lot of slope associated with it, it's excluded from the design.
No danger.
So, it's like, we, we developed in Mississippi as an example, part of five are flat lands, it'd be a lot of support. In the state of Texas, we're fortunate to have a lot of flat lands, so we just work around the occupation.
What's the estimated time, construction time, project time?
Surprisingly, for wind, you can, you can build a wind farm within twelve months, but generally for solar, it takes about eight to ten months.
Commissioner Chris will give you that official question.
And then, this is not part of any of the Jack County solar farm coming, that they're having, coming in over there.
Yes.
I do know that in the process, there is lots of damage to county roads over there. They've actually had, the county, Jack County has, to where the wind, the solar farms coming in, having to wet and re-rock the road as they do this, because there's so much traffic in and out, milling up the trees, getting the stuff cleaned up.
Y'all have to access the county road, or would y'all be on highway system?
We, we would mainly be coming off of the highway system, however, we will work closely, is this your preaching question?
No, sir, it's Scott's, but I just seen the damage, because I, I do some stuff over in Jack County, and I was just seeing the damage that was caused there, and trying to get up and down that road and the amount of trucks, and I mean, they're just doing like a four mile stretch of rock creek road there, and it just, what was going on there, it was kind of alarming to me.
So what we would like to do is engage with each Commissioner closely to identify if there are any twenty roads in the region, or that might be affected by the project. We don't think so, because the landowner that we're working with, primarily encompasses most of the area. However, nonetheless, if there are, we will closely, we should ensure that the county is. Typically, any renewable energy companies have been doing so through real use maintenance agreements, but the contract has been stayed in contact with your precincts about, like personally, to identify if any of the first.
I guess it'd probably be helpful for Scott if you gave him a map of exactly where this is, you know, to be able to identify.
Right.
That's what you're talking about.
Y'all know when you want to start?
The timeline presently, there at the bottom is for, presently the company's going through its development process, is one of the longest lead times that it does encounter is working with the Public Utilities Commission of the state of Texas to ensure that interconnection requests and agreement is satisfied, or they usually take about eighteen months for a study, interconnection study, to be conducted and completed, and then thereafter, they begin to discuss the agreement to make sure that the terms are satisfied with it. So the reason you see a potential twenty twenty-seven start date is because, as Titus has already engaged with Public Utilities Commission, they're facing the longest lead time already on that interconnection agreement, being up around eighteen to twenty-four months. So that's why you see a construction start date of about twenty twenty-seven, from today, it's dated twenty-five, so.
We, we've already facilitated a number of items towards a successful development of the project, so. We front-end utilities by hiring a transmission engineering firm, so they can run the same studies that the utility will run to ensure the connection is there, and they came up with, we have critical issues analysis performed by environmental firms that, that came up, but so, as you surmise, we've already engaged landowners, and we have these leases secured, so we have, we have that investment, we filed for interconnection service with the T S P, and have put together all the sufficient electrical engineering to do that, we're doing preliminary geotech, Almond site, and I'm sure I'm forgetting a few things, but we, you know, it, development is like a sort of a funnel of uncertainty, and it's our job to de-risk the project, up to that point of financing, and the reason that I started my discussion by saying that this has, project has sort of risen to the top, is because every one of those checkboxes have been met, and, and like I said, we're terribly excited about it.
Is, is the solar panels themselves, in the long run, getting a better life expectancy than what they were? I mean, they were ten years, and then the abatements were ten years, so by the time they come online, you were looking at nearly nothing in tax revenue compared to what they were as a build project. Are the life expectancies of them increasing anymore?
Yes, the, the life expectancy of the modern solar panels, forty years now.
That's a lot.
But the depreciation is already depreciated.
Your eye through this.
That's through the state, but they have a ten-year depreciation on them.
Well, when they first started doing them, the life expectancy was about ten years, so I was curious.
Commissioner, you also see a slight bump in your tax revenue around year twelve or thirteen, only because the inverters are likely to require some replacement at that point, so the life of the project is gonna see that bump.
What'd you call that, a reverter?
Inverter.
Inverter. They're taking DC voltage and moving it to DC.
The inverters get replaced, and then you see that additional.
You're doing the same thing with the batteries, you're transferring in DC current, and it'll come out AC current. You have two different sets of inverter, one that's a solar set, and one for the battery.
Anything else we need to discuss?
Where are your solar panels, where are they manufactured, where are they manufactured?
Well, neither do you, well, I mentioned Canadian solar, but they're actually manufactured here in Texas. Chico Solar is manufactured in Florida, First Solar is manufactured in the first west. But there's currently a domestic ten percent tax incentive for solar developers to utilize panels that are manufactured in the U S. And there's so much uncertainty around Chinese panels, that the whole industry is pretty much purchasing their panels domestically.
Robert, Germany is one, does Germany produce solar panels?
Yeah.
That's why I was curious.
Yeah, because Germans are fabulous engineers.
Anything else?
I think Judge, overall, we would appreciate the opportunity to submit our application to you, and initially begin the discussions, and find to any points, questions, applications you have.
Application for what?
For, for an appointment question.
I was waiting, waiting for y'all to spring that up.
Judge, Judge, I was mentioning earlier, so I was continuing on, my apologies, but he, he's based on your request application, and continue discussing the different programs of the project with you all.
Yeah, I've never been through that process, Stacy, were you ever involved with one of those processes?
With a wind farm.
You were, so, so we got two experts here on the table. So, yeah, if you could, if you could send something like that, I know one of the things that I think we would require, whether we granted or not, that our legal fees would be reimbursed for exploring that. So, that'd be one thing we would be requesting from you guys, as, as far as starting that process. I won't be able to vote in any of this, because I do have a conflict.
Well, did you guys, somebody would give you a go-to in the wind farm?
Okay. Well, I guess y'all submit that request to me, do, how does that get discussed? Do we, do we hear?
We'll go around the court here, and then sit here and discuss it out. We'll send it off to our attorney.
Okay.
Let him work out the details, once he gets something worked out, he'll come back to us, go over the details with us, and find out, like he's talking about.
We'll have a closed meeting.
Okay, alright, well, if y'all can submit that in, we can start that process. I've never been through this process, so it'll be.
One of the deals of the process is telling you about how many, we like to use local people, you know, so much local people do the construction work and stuff like that, that's, that part of the stuff that you fill out.
You know, I know like the city, when they do economic development things, they said they were gonna have roughly seven full-time employees, making between sixty to eighty, and he estimates that they'll live in the county. And the city, when they do their abatements for people, they, they actually make that a requirement, or they tie the abatement to that, and so every year you have to, they would turn in who their employees were, where they were living, and basically to, to prove up that, yeah, they're, you are getting these jobs in the county, which, you know, is a win for the county, when you get, you know, an eighty thousand dollar job, it's a good job in the county.
Yes, but we understand too, through our process, that if you request some certain tasks that need to be done, and nobody's in our county to do it, then that's one of the things.
Yeah, I mean, you only do what you can do.
Do what you do. We just require you to try.
There's more than likely no solar panel expert in Young County right now.
But you hire them, and they move in.
Yeah.
And then there's people here that have, that gone to school for that, and we have people that do that.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, well, I look forward to seeing that, and.
Thank you.
We have a resident. Could I, could I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Where do utilities from this go to, do they stay, do they get sold to us, or do they go out of state, or what?
They, they get it, they go into the power line, and they go to Dallas.
They go to Dallas, okay.
We're just, we're, we're, you know, fortunate that we have the power lines going through this, and this, this is supplementing the, the power line going into the city.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, and then Commissioner Shook will be your man.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Robert's the point of contact, but like I said, I think it should be beyond that, and please reach out to me, happy to come right back or visit here.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you. Alright, item number thirteen, discuss and consider Royal Auction Group to sell county equipment. Who put this on the agenda?
Yes.
This is one of the things that we, we, we don't, we have one thing that we would like to try, see how it works out, and it's that auto machine, and the way their service works, they'll come get it, take it up there, and we're gonna put some kind of reserve on it, that's, that's our project, and we don't, we don't have to, but there is a pretty raw deal, and it's, they have an opportunity to make money at it, so we'll be shot.
So, right now, we use gov deals at Renee Bayes, and this would be the third one, and they do have a little agreement.
Yes, they're agreeing very closely on who wants to do this, now, we're gonna have to run this in paper prior to this, or just?
No, no, when it's some adoption like this.
So what we'll do then is, once we agree on this, when that phone call we got, we're gonna pick it up, take it up there, and then auction it.
And they like the fact that they come and pick it up, and we don't have to deal with setting up for people to pick it up, that sometimes is a thing.
Commissioner Waller, are you making a motion that we sign an agreement with Royal Auction Group to try them out on a trial basis as a auction group for the county?
Yes, this is not exclusive, it's exclusive to them.
We, we have other, we, we got, this is just adding another one to our, to our tool we have. We have a second from Commissioner Shook, is there any discussion or concern? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Item number fourteen, this is ratify the agreement for the sub courthouse in Alny, Tom Parker is here. We, we discussed this contract and approved it at our last Commissioners' meeting. I've executed it on behalf of Young County, Johnny Moore executed it on behalf of the Alny Economic Development Corporation. Just really hoping, you know, I wanted to get it ratified and have executed agreement in the public records. Is there anything you want to add to that, Tom?
Just an update on what's going on, February first, they'll arrive to begin doing the removal of the windows that are in place. The windows will be delivered on the fifth, we hope for the completion by the eleventh of the windows on the south side. North side will be the week following, so by the end, by the end. So by the end, by the end of February, all windows will be in and that, that portion of it, weather, weather tightness of the building will be completed. HVAC is scheduled to start on the sixth. They anticipate that's a five-day, there's a, whatever that week is, I think it's the ninth. We've already worked with the folks that are, that are there in place. We're going to try to accomplish all of that, install that week. So there'll be demolition of ceiling, new ceiling going up, and in between ductwork will be, will be placed. So by the end of February, it'll be a completely different environment that we're in. We're quote, because of some cost savings, we're, we're looking at doing some new flooring in the main hall. So as we, we've set a budget and if we can continue to knock some of the costs out of it, we'll put the money back into other improvements as we go along. So it's, it's moving in the right direction. No, we haven't had any OGS yet. We had environmental's done last week and the preliminary is all clear. No asbestos, no lead. I was really surprised no lead been.
Are you doing the bottom windows and the top windows?
Yes, sir. In that, in that building, there'll only be one window opening that's there currently. They will not have a, a window like is, what is there, the double hung, they're going to look like double hung. There's only actually six movable windows because of the HVAC going in, we're going with fixed panels. One will be a glass block in the utility room and that's only so we can touch through ventilation and whatnot through that, through that matrix. But everything else is going to look basically, it'll go back to what it looked like in nineteen twenty-six.
Okay.
We're also looking to do a new front door and back door. And in these cost savings, we're looking for some, coming back with more architecturally relevant, look, look more like what, what it was in twenty-six. Get away from the standard municipal aluminum door. They also let in a lot of sunlight that works on making that hallway up, so that's all part of the HVAC thing, try to get that cooler. So everything's moving in the right direction. I'll, I'll be back as we go, when we're complete with those sections, I'll come back and report on those and let you know where we are.
Appreciate it. Excellent. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, yes.
We have a motion to ratify the executive agreement. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, a second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next tie goes to you, though. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider replacing Stacy Rogers with Alan Craig on the Young County Arena Board. Commissioner Craig has, has unselfishly volunteered to step into that role. Thank you. Make it's good, Jimmy Wiley obviously serves on that board, so it's good. We have, we do have a significant amount of financial responsibility with that arena. It's good that we have two of our commissioners willing to serve on, make a motion. We have a motion for Commissioner Shook, we have a second.
I'll say it.
Second from Commissioner Cresswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero and, and thank you for, for not voting against yourself.
Will you send, when we get the minutes done, will you send a copy of the minutes over there here to the city?
Yeah.
That way we can, yeah, that's the adoption rate that they need.
Okay.
Alan can be sworn in.
Okay, yeah.
Item number sixteen, discuss and consider an application permit across the county road to construct pipeline or utility from Razz's Telephone Co-op on Upper Tongue Valley Road. We've covered Middle Tongue Valley, now we got Upper Tongue Valley. This is Commissioner Shook.
It's just part of the new housing that's being developed out there. It is a gravel road. Razz's always takes good care of cleaning up and flooring across and no problems there. I'll just make a motion, we accept that.
Okay. Motion from Commissioner Shook, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Second from Commissioner Wiley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Discuss and consider burn restrictions. There, it is starting to get dry.
We have about five smoke investigations Sunday alone.
We're on the, Jared with TM, he sent out a deal. We are on the edge. I mean, we're, part of Young County was in it, but a small part. But we're like on the edge of the high-risk of fire area, so.
There's big fans of rain this week.
Wednesday, Thursday.
I don't, I don't think we're there yet, but I, but I'm, my point is, I think we're pretty close to needing to go back into a burn ban. It's just keep that on the back of your mind as you're driving around, you know, and you're looking.
Burn ban sign is up on sixty-seven.
Are they up? They just never took it down?
Yeah.
Now.
On that, that cannon on route.
On six and seven. Is it south? It on, like going, like going to Breckenridge?
No, going, going to, coming to, yeah, northbound, on the northbound side.
Okay. The other, the plus side of this deal, well, it is, if we get rain, they're talking about getting. And the future will be in the seventies next week.
Uh-huh.
We'll go get some more green vegetation.
Uh-huh.
Right there.
Yeah.
So.
For a little while, until it grays and then it becomes yellow.
There we go.
The good news is always following my battery.
Springs right around the corner.
All right, so is it fair to say no action on that?
No.
All right. Item number eighteen, adjourned to exist.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell. We have a second from Commissioner Wiley, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. That was a long day.
It was.
Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate it. Yeah, but that was great. We had wonderful work out for that.
She and I, we had a thing written out in the sign, the option.
Your electric cars.
That she gets, um, cutting into the Alcoa. Yeah, the Royal.
Rest of the secretary.
I get the sign and you do a copy. Yep.
You probably need a copy of all this.
Yes.
You don't need the original.
Because that may be stepped in. You don't have to have, it's a huge disruption. One of my questions was, do they have a spot user, actually, hit something like that. Towel. Towel, that taken off the other one, so you.
When you put a spot, you write it down.
That's what I'm thinking now, because how much of a cop did I have to say about this? And all of it.
Here it comes, everything is up.
Yeah, and.
But if you get a spot user, it's less than.
Exactly.
They require some, or less. I'm not so sure. We've talked about a bunch of different things, but as, as a nuclear company, it's all, I would usually really look at creating any energy circle from, well, lack of a better word.
It's all going in the grid. It all goes in the grid and then even.
You didn't have that, that very.
What we need to do, what we need to do, some of the, some of the risks, the way we see, oh, yeah, a little bit of our generator material, well, that way, we can, we can get them for a better.
I mean, we won't.
This is not going.
It's the option.
This deal here is not going to pay very much.
No.
This is just a.
Hey, get me the gas, I got the jam.
We've got to turn this on.
Yes, thanks, Marty.
Y'all have something to talk about?
This is a.
There's a lot of stuff to be seen. Yeah, I think I can read that. Well, yeah, let's go grab something else.
I'd like to grab some, some.
He's going to be in, he's going to be in Alny for a little while. Easy, brief, just start it up. So. I've just been around for a while.
They sound like they've been out for a good while.
And I just kept waiting, they just, get, get to the house, come on.
I'll get your copy of this, okay?
And I'll tell you. And it's, the force commissions will tell you, you can't make them put those people in there.
Oh, really?
It's very difficult to do.
You can't tie an incentive to that?
You, you can, it's difficult.
How would they?
Yeah, because you can always claim, I, I tried, they've run the ad seven times and I can't get the money. These are the qualifications, no.
So you can't say that, you can't make that a contingency of this?
Is that turned off?
What, what we need to do is, in the region, is we need to develop a commission, a training facility here for multiple circuits. You could do wind and solar, battery BMS is another.
Yeah.